And as we always do, we'll start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance and ask that you remain standing for a brief moment of silence. Uh, Mr. Spilvogel, would you lead us in the pledge?
I will, thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a brief moment of silence. Thank you. Vanessa, would you be kind enough to call the roll?
Commissioner Spilvogel?
Here.
Commissioner Buick?
Present.
Commissioner Vogler?
Here. Thank you. We have a forum. We always have time for public comment, both in a few moments as well as prior to adjournment of the meeting. If you wish to speak both times, you're welcome to. If you want to speak just one of the two times, that's fine. Or if you're just here to listen, that's equally fine. We do ask that your comments be related to county government matters, and then if you can, try to limit your time to about five minutes. We appreciate that. First. Next on the agenda would be roll officer reports and comments. Our chief deputy comptroller, Sarah Effinger, is with us for bid openings in just a few moments. But if anything else over and above that that you have from the comptroller's office?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So glad to have you with us. And that takes care of roll officers. I'll open the floor for public comments at this time. Hearing none, we'll move forward. Under fiscal and contractual, we did receive a repository bid that has been rejected by the other two taxing bodies. Uh, this bid is for a parcel in Shenango Township, parcel number 31401300, located at 4352 Hollow Road. It was a $500 bid made by Mr. Jarrell Jones. Both the Shenango Township supervisors, excuse me, and the Shenango area school board have rejected this proposed bid. Um, Vanessa, what number would this one be?
424.
424, thank you. So it now comes before us, as we've noted before, if, uh, if one of the three taxing bodies rejects the bid, the bid is rejected. In other words, it necessitates having all three taxing bodies agree before a bid can be formally accepted. So we do have this proposal in front of us. I would certainly entertain a motion at this time.
Seventh.
Uh, second, and the motion's to reject the bid, as did Shenango School District and the municipality.
We will vote to reject it as well separately. So we are moving forward with the motion.
You're moving with your motion to reject it or to approve?
Reject it.
You're moving to reject.
Yes.
I second the motion to reject.
Any further discussion?
So you're voting yes to reject?
Yes.
Right. So it makes sure we're on the same page.
Motion is on the floor. It's been seconded to reject proposed Resolution 422, which in effect will reject the bid and put us on the same page as the other two taxing bodies. There are no other questions or concerns. I'll ask Vanessa to call the roll.
Commissioner Spilvogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Buick?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion carries, which rejects the bid.
Correct.
It has been rejected. Thank you both. Next on the agenda, we have a bid opening. And as I mentioned earlier, our chief deputy comptroller, Sarah Effinger, is with us. And if you'd like to come forward, Sarah, thank you. This bid opening is for the Quaker Falls Recreation Park Phase Two out in Mahoning Township. We advertised appropriately for receipt of these bids, and a mandatory pre-bid meeting was held on October 31. And today we will be opening the bids that have been submitted. So, uh, Sarah, how many bids did we receive?
We received three.
Three. And to your knowledge, were they all received in a timely manner?
They were.
Okay, thank you. If you'd be kind enough to proceed with the opening, but and as I'm sure you know, what Dave generally does is he'll tell us the name of the bidder and where they're located.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, first one is Vermont Stone and Port out of Pittsburgh. Uh, let's see, the bid total is $272,615. Uh, the next one is Horizon Construction Group out of Seneca Pier. Uh, the bid total is $199,950. And the final bid is S E T Inc. out of Lowville, Ohio. Uh, let's see, total bid price, $31,528.27.
Can you repeat that?
This says $31,528.27.
But wait, there's more.
But wait, there's more. I hope, yes, yes, there's a number missing on the first page. Oh, there it is. It is $352,282.70.
Those three bids then will be entered into the record. What we generally do is table the bids to allow planning office, I assume perhaps our county engineer, and consultation with the comptroller's office to review them, and then at a later date come back to us with a recommendation. Before I ask for a motion to table, I'll see if Mr. Buick has any concerns. Thank you. Commissioners Spilvogel, anything? May I, everything okay, Amy? Okay, may I have a motion then to table these bids?
Seventh.
Is there a second? Thank you both, uh, on the motion to table. We'll do a roll call, please.
Commissioner Spilvogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Buick?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Sarah, thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Yes.
Next on the agenda are the warrant registers from the comptroller's office. Dated October 31, November 6, November 8, and November 9. I would agree on you, we didn't meet last week because of Election Day, so we have a larger number than usual. I'll give my colleagues time to look them over, and I could entertain a motion to accept these documents whenever you folks are ready. Please feel free to ask any questions that you might have.
I do not see anything out of the ordinary, so I will move to accept them.
Thank you, Loretta.
I will second the motion. I do have one question.
Please, you're in order.
Maybe Joe knows the bottom of the first page, Zixcore.
That's a, an encryption for mail, for email services, I believe, Zixmail, which would be highly used by probably CYS and MHBS, along with other departments.
Thanks, I just wasn't familiar with that company's name. But they're all good with the rest of the gift.
Thank you. That triggers, I'm glad Brian asked that question. Um, you mentioned CYS. Did I hear you say possibly MHBS?
MHBS, we would use that.
That being said, would a portion of the cost for this be covered by Commonwealth?
Yes, and I know in MHBS, like, or Zixmail is covered by the authorities.
Understood.
And I'm not sure of the amount of things, but that's.
Good to know. So that the entire amount here, part of it would be general fund, but part of it would be state dollars?
Yeah, it could be all state dollars. It could be. I know, I know the cost of it.
Okay.
That's helpful, just so the mail's more secure because the email complicates.
It's an issue, okay.
So it makes sense.
That's why we're doing all the mail.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Loretta, any other questions on your part?
No.
Thank you. Joe, appreciate your help. We have a motion and a second to accept the warrant registers as submitted. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Spilvogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Buick?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Minutes and correspondence, we have the minutes of the October 31 Commissioners' meeting. My colleagues, please take time to look them over, and I could entertain a motion to adopt the minutes whenever you're ready.
Seventh.
Second. I thank you both. Any questions for discussion regarding the minutes? Hearing none, I'll ask Vanessa to call the roll, please.
Commissioner Spilvogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Buick?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, written communications. We did receive one document dated November 3 from IAG Consulting. They are a municipal engineering firm based in Hermitage, and they are giving Act 14 notification, which is a National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Permit Application that they are submitting to the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection. The applicant name is Royalty Place LLC. The facility name is Royalty Place Subdivision. The facility address is 412 Old Youngstown Road, State Route 4007. The municipality is Union Township Morris County. The description is "The construction of infrastructure for the purpose of the creation of a new single and multifamily residential subdivision with a total land disturbance of approximately 73 acres." And it is signed by Ian Garfolye, Principal Engineer. Any questions or concerns? And if not, I would entertain then a motion to accept this document. So move.
Second.
Thank you both. Any further discussion? We'll do a roll call to accept it.
Commissioner Spilvogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Buick?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Commissioner reports and comments. I'd like to go first today. I simply want to make note of the fact that in the last two weeks, we've lost two gentlemen who, at one point during their respective careers, served in local municipal government. We lost Mr. Michael Ferrero from Bessemer Borough. At one point in time, he served on Borough Council and also served as mayor. He was, for many years, the, uh, a music teacher, band director at Mika High. I was, I went to school with his kids. You, the two of you, having both been Mika High graduates, I'm sure you both knew Mr. Ferrero. We send our sympathy to his family. And then Dawn Little from Volant Borough passed away. Dawn was on Borough Council for a number of years up in the borough of Volant. So our sympathy goes out to both, uh, both of those families. Mr. Buick, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, a great deal of my time the last two weeks was spent regarding election board activities. I believe I'd say the election staff did a great job again, and yesterday the canvassing board was sworn in and began their work. And we'll probably have an election board meeting here in about two weeks, and I'll give more updates at that time. Just a few other notes, things that I attended in the past two weeks. I attended the Lawrence County Planning Commission meeting in Shenango Township. I attended the... A meeting on public housing issues in Lawrence County with the Housing Authority staff and Representative Brown's office staff. I participated in the Local Emergency Planning Committee at the Pennsylvania Department, Lawrence County Department of Public Safety. Um, I attended a webinar on the situation going on in Israel currently. And I attended a opioid education program held at the Shannick High School last week on Wednesday evening, put on by the Lawrence County Medical Society. They had excellent speakers there and reemphasized the importance of Lawrence County residents being aware of what drugs are circulating in the county and the danger that most of it. The deputy coroner was there and stressed that most every drug in Lawrence County is laced with fentanyl in one way or the other, and that's what they're seeing in almost every overdose death. Um, last year we had 85 overdose deaths in Lawrence County. So far this year, it's around 51, which is 51 too many, but at least we're on track right now to be less than last year. So we hope the continuing efforts of the, um, all the folks working on that issue is making some positive difference. Those are my comments for today. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Spilvogel?
Thank you. Several of those meetings I was in attendance as well as Dan also. Um, we did, we had the election last week. Um, the results are in, they're, it will be, Dan will be here for next year. I will not, but Dan Kennedy and Kristen Latta will be here, and there'll be time to discuss more of that later on as the year goes on, but wishing everybody well in that endeavor. One of the things that I did promise to do was that the remaining time that I had was to continue to work on different projects that, um, that I had a passion for. And one of the things right now that, um, just so very interesting to me is our 911 systems and the fact that our surcharge, the 911 surcharge sunsets next month, or excuse me, in January of 2024. And although there have been numerous attempts to bring a bill forward, to bring something forward, um, the most recent one that came forward from the Senate was one that proposes to extend the sunset without any surcharge increase. What you as taxpayers need to know for Lawrence County and any other county around is that throughout the years, the cost of running our 911 center has increased and the surcharge has not. So therefore, in this situation that we are in right now, where we are having to fund more of our 911 systems, I believe, Joe, you said we were at 88% funded, and now we're down to, what, 55 or 56% funded?
We're going to be down there real soon.
Okay. Those monies have to be replaced by tax dollars. That is going to come from our general fund. The fact that this passed the Senate with no increase to kick the can down the road and have counties once again have to bear the brunt of funding a system that is, it is already at a crisis point. We are having difficulty keeping our 911 telecommunicators because of the, um, the rates that other counties are offering surrounding us, the pay increases that they are having. That is an area that, that we are going to have discussion on in the next couple of weeks. But to know that the Senate voted to pass a bill to move it forward to the House floor that there is no surcharge increase is totally beyond me. I would hope that those of you that are listening in, or those of you that may hear this, that certainly go on the phone and call our representatives as well as our senators and let them know that that's not acceptable because that's more money coming out of your purse because that's a multimillion dollar operation. And if we're not getting the money from the state, guess where it's coming from? Our county residents' pockets. Thank you.
Just to clarify, the surcharge that you referenced is a, is a surcharge on people's funds bills, right?
On the phone, very soon.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Loretta and Brian. Appreciate both of you.
I feel as if I've stolen a bit of your thunder. Brian, I know you've worked very hard with this and have been very diligent in working on it, but I just felt that we didn't say. Our citizens need to be aware of that. They do, because that is not acceptable, not acceptable.
Thank you. If I could just follow up real quick.
Of course.
I had mentioned a month or so ago, I did offer that all of our four legislative, state legislators from Penns, from Lawrence County and their staff to come to the Lawrence County 911 Center. A couple of them did personally, a couple of them sent their staff. I provided them information at that time. I emailed our County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania, very active, allowing the entire General Assembly on this issue. And I emailed all four of our legislators again yesterday, Representative Brown, Representative Bernstein, and Senators Brooks and Vogel with this information. And I too am disappointed that the Senate took the action they did yesterday. Um, so we'll continue to follow up on this issue, and to me, this is a critical public safety issue. It's a life and death issue. We all need and deserve to have a fully staffed, highly updated with technology 911 system, and I will continue to advocate for this. So thank you.
I thank both of you very much. Moving along to new resolutions. Mr. Grippo, would you like to join us? Mike Grippo is with our Children and Youth Services Department. And Vanessa, what number would we?
425.
425, thank you. Mike, you have in front of us a proposed resolution. I believe this would be for a contract with a provider known as Community Options, Inc. of Princeton, New Jersey, but I'll let you fill us in.
Yeah, this is a new contract. We have a situation with one child. This is the only place I would take him, but they actually designed a program to take him in their facility. So this won't happen until January. You know, the child. He's been under our care for many, many, many years. And it's a situation where they want him to, where he's at, to be removed, and the judge ordered to get, you know, this program. I've been working on this contract for about two months to get it, all the paperwork, so I can get it in. But it's supposed to happen around January, and again, they redesigned, they made a program specifically for this child.
We hear the term "complex case" used, where the particular situations are extremely challenging in terms of finding a provider that will house these, these young folks. And I'm assuming this falls under that category of being a complex case, which you search far and wide to find a provider willing and able to accept them. This is not unique to Lawrence County. This is happening not only statewide, but even nationwide. Let me see if we have.
Yeah, if I'm not mistaken, just because their, their business is located in New Jersey, I'm not, I think the facility's still in that.
I see. Okay, that's.
Without me checking.
That's good to know. Thank you. Commissioner Spilvogel, any questions for Mike? No, thank you. Commissioner Buick?
That was my only question, if their headquarters in New Jersey, where's the actual facility?
Yeah, I'm almost sure. I'm almost sure it's in Philly.
Okay.
Because I, when I do the resolutions, I look at the 79, and that's, that's what happens.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir. There are no other questions. I could entertain then a motion for approval of Resolution 425.
Seventh.
Second, thank you both. Any other concerns? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call, please.
Commissioner Spilvogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Buick?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next resolution, number 426, also with CYS, is a purchase of service agreement with a company known as Computer Aid, Inc. of Allentown, Pennsylvania. Mike, you can maybe clarify. I assume they're not a provider per se, or do they deal with your computer network, or are they a provider?
No, they're, they're not a provider. They don't deal with our computers. They're actually our training, our physical department.
I see.
Okay, and they go on video conferences and they set up, and they've been with us last year, it's a renewal.
Yeah.
So they help them work, any questions they have, the budget, any situation, you know, like the state requires them to do, and they're not sure how to do it, they're consultants. Okay, and we, it, they're $85 an hour, and there's a limit up to $7,225.
I take it you and the senior management have been satisfied with their service?
Yeah.
To your knowledge.
Yeah, because we had, we, we just renewed their contract again.
Thank you.
But we cut back the hours because as they start, are now to grasp on budgeting and stuff like that, you know, they don't need as much.
Thank you for that background. Mr. Buick, questions, or Mike, no? Loretta, any questions? Okay. Could I have a motion then for us to take action on this resolution?
Seventh.
Second. Thank you both. This is Resolution 426. If there are no other concerns, I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Commissioner Spilvogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Buick?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Vanessa. Mike, appreciate your joining us.
Thank you.
That'd be Thanksgiving to you.
Yes.
And your family.
Well, I'm like the doctor. No, that's right, that's right, really.
That's right. Yeah, you had a nice call with them.
Uh, you did.
Thank you, Mike. Next on the agenda is proposed Resolution 427. And before I turn it over to Commissioner Buick, I'll note that earlier in the year, the three of us felt that it was appropriate that we pulled together a committee of folks from throughout the community to begin planning for the commemoration of the county's 175th anniversary of our, of our being formed by the state legislature back in 1849. My colleague, Commissioner Buick, has been very kind in agreeing to chair this committee, and they've met on numerous occasions and have a lot of things planned. You may recall, back in the summer, we had a visit from a gentleman from Little Beaver Township, Ian Baker, who has put together a proposed flag that would commemorate the county's 175th anniversary celebration. I should also note, just on a side note, Mr. Baker was just elected to the Mohawk School Board, so he'll take office, they take office in December. Anyhow, that being said, I'm going to turn this over to Commissioner Buick for his comments regarding the request that the county adopt the lowville and flag as the official flag and logo for the 175th anniversary. Brian, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have copies here for anybody who wants it. As you mentioned, we've had three meetings. You initiated the first meeting, and a group of citizen volunteers from Lawrence County have come together to plan some activities and an updated booklet on the history of Lawrence County in commemoration of our 170, 175th anniversary, which will be observed officially on March 20th, 2024. And as you mentioned, Ian Baker, a young man from our county, put a lot of time and effort into it. And this is the proposed logo that he came up with, and this has been reviewed by the committee and by several other interested parties, folks from the historical societies and libraries in the county. And he came up with two versions of the flag as well, and I'll explain. As everybody knows by now, on the ballot last week was the question of whether South Newcastle Borough in Shenango Township would should proceed with a municipal merger. And that did pass. However, that will not take effect officially until January of 2026. So the, we had come up with two versions, one with 10 stars for the 10 boroughs and another with nine, but I would like to have the Board of Commissioners adopt this logo with, there's 27 stars total, large one in the middle is for the city of Newcastle. The 10 on the outer ring represent the 10 boroughs, and the 16 smaller ones represent the 16 townships. The slogan, "Don't Give Up the Ship," was used. Obviously, it's from the Battle of Lake Erie during the War of 1812, and Captain James Lawrence, a naval hero, which was our namesake of our county. 1849 is our year of creation, and 2024 is our anniversary. And so I would like this to be adopted as the official logo of the county's 175th anniversary, and the flag with the 10 stars. And so I have copies for anyone who would like to see them, but I think this will be nice to commemorate our history. It's very important to preserve that history and pass it on and teach it to the younger generations so they appreciate Lawrence County. We have so many great qualities. Like everywhere else, we have our share of challenges, but there's so many great things about living and working in Lawrence County. And I would move for the adoption of Resolution 427 for the official logo of our county's 175th anniversary.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
I would gladly second.
Thank you, Loretta, and I'll turn it over to you for your comments.
Thank you. Excellent work, Commissioner Buick, for your lead on the committee and, and the extensive meetings that you have had. I think it is commendable. I think it is commendable that this is happening and being done and that we have somebody so young taking such an interest in our county. And hopefully it does generate some more activity from the younger generations to get involved with it. Thank you for the work that you've done. Absolutely.
Very good point. I concur with Commissioner Spillvo. Appreciate your leadership on this.
Well, if I can just add one thing, as you know, you serve on the Board of Visit Lawrence County. And Jenny Jacob and Jennifer Lotico is the Director and Assistant Director of that agency are on the committee, volunteering on the committee, and they're going to help promote awareness of the county's anniversary during all the great events in Lawrence County next year. So thank you for your service on that board and I bet you've worked hard for Lawrence County as well. Thank you.
Debbie, I'm going to, when I give you your packet, I've included those two documents that Mr. Buick referenced. They'll be in your packet. We have a motion and I believe Commissioner Steelvogel offered the second for Proposed Resolution four twenty-seven. If there are no other comments, we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Steelvogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Buick?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Vanessa. Once again, Brian, thank you so much. My privilege. The next Proposed Resolution four twenty-eight is a budget amendment. Amy, good morning. Amy McKinney is our County Planning Director. It's always nice to have you with us. I appreciate that. This proposed resolution talks about the Family First Housing Program through the Community Development Block Grant COVID funds, if I'm not mistaken, in the amount of three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars. But I'll let you fill us in on the specifics if you'd like to do that.
Yep, this is CDBG CV three. Oh, I know. COVID body, but this is the discretionary part. The discretionary part is the competitive round that we applied for. We received over a million dollars. This is for the Frumell YDC or YDC site. Some of it was for public services and then also some of it was for the Family First Housing Program. They had additional funds available. We had a need for some additional funds, so we made a request for the three hundred and thirty-seven hundred and sixty-five dollars and it was approved. The contract has been signed off on and approved. You know, Loretta, they've signed off on that. So really, all this is just adjusting the budget so that we can pay the amount to Lawrence County. We had to partnership, so.
Thank you for all your hard work on this.
Yes.
I'll see if Loretta has questions or comments.
Just comments that, you know, that the program is up and running. It's something that's unique for Lawrence County. We're very happy to have it and hope forward to finding additional ways to address the needs of our young families that are in service. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Loretta. Brian?
Just, do we know, I think I heard there's one family has moved into that housing so far.
One, nine children, no matter.
There were one and they just started a referral meeting for a second now after the referral meeting and accepted and sort of the provider starts their interview and taking people out there showing what they have to offer and hopefully the family or the, you have a family quite some, so.
There's a committee, I think you also.
I'm actually on the committee.
And they review the applicants and make recommendations, so.
Yeah.
Just a couple of quick comments. I hope that they find additional families that can benefit from that program.
Yes.
And as you know, I think you were with me, Commissioner Vogler, it was bittersweet for me. Earlier this year, I got to go out and tour. I hadn't been back to that campus since I lost my job as a teacher at the Development Center in Newcastle. But the facility looks good. They've done a lot of work. They retrofitted a couple of the housing units that the students used to live in at YDC are now used for this program. And the school that I taught in is now used for the Head Start, early Head Start program. So it's good to see the facility being put to good use and I hope the program helps many, many people along the way. So thank you, Amy, for all your efforts on that.
Thank you. And we may not know this, how many families can get into that women's unit?
Six.
Six, okay.
We have six, so.
Six, okay.
Yes, that's correct.
They're great. Beautiful, well timed and put together. Does not look institutionalized at all to see. You would know going through those buildings and, you know, that the institution look of things, it is not there now. Very happy, very pleased with the work that everybody has done to put this together. Very much so. Let's get those things.
Thank you, everybody. That is Proposed Resolution four twenty-eight that we've been discussing and I believe it's been moved to second. Am I correct, Vanessa?
It has not.
Oh, I'm sorry. May I have a motion for four twenty-eight?
Second.
Second, thank you both. Now it's been moved to second. Any further final comments? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call, please.
Commissioner Steelvogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Buick?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Do you have other things, Amy?
I have a transfer on there. I'm looking at you to say for that though, but.
I don't think, I don't think so. It's routine and.
Thank you.
We need you, we can come get you, but I'm sure we'll be fine.
Thank you. And the proprietary property management account, that is on the list of the demo. Yeah, we're down to demolish for the redevelopment authority, so.
I see.
And it is in very, very bad shape, so I'm glad that everybody didn't know on the past.
You know, now that you say that, it was so noted.
It was noted on the rejection.
On the township document, on the township demo list.
Yeah, we have the document. Please come out and talk, so it is in bad shape, so. Um, thank you guys for that as well.
I'm sure.
As always, thank you. You take care.
Thank you.
Next, next on the agenda, Proposed Resolution four twenty-nine. This is another budget amendment. Enter it in for discussion, then I might look to Loretta for a little bit of guidance here. This is taking a hundred and forty thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars from the prior year balance of the opioid revenue fund account and earmarking it same dollar amount for the district attorney, major equipment opioid expense fund account. And it does say reason, camera, system. I'm going to guess that you know something about this.
I do.
If you do and if you don't, we'll share it.
I don't know how much room.
Well, whatever you're able to share.
Well, you know, we do have that ability to distribute dollars as we see fit. That was one of the things that, you know, when the opioid monies were approved, that counties, they were given directly to the counties to use as they see fit because our needs as opposed to elegant economy, this is probably something that our county could not put together because of the cost, but because of the actions that our DA's office has taken and working with the task force. And I'm just saying this in a very roundabout way, that this is something that will definitely be very useful in the future, consistently throughout many, many years.
In other words, we don't want the bad guys to know all the details. Is that a good way of putting it?
Correct.
Fair enough. Fair enough.
Go ahead.
Yeah, please.
One of the other benefits to this is that there is a reimbursement
Yes.
that the PDA has secured. So although we're transferring the hundred and forty-four fifty from that account today, he will be able to, in next fiscal year, be able to put seventy-five thousand of that.
Almost half, almost half of that, yes.
That's great. That's very good news.
And if I may note as well, because we, we do have other applicants for the opioid monies. They are being reviewed and we, the unfortunate thing is that we are not receiving our twenty twenty-three allocations until December. So we have met, we've discussed, but we've not gone any further than that, although we know what our amounts will be. We just don't want to jump the gun and do any approvals in case something odd happens and then we don't get it. But we are moving forward, those of you that are listening in that, you know, have submitted different grant applications to the opioid advisory board, those are still in process. However, we are waiting until we get those funds electronically transferred. And we have received notice that they will come either December, between the thirteenth and fifteenth of December. So therefore, we do want to wait before we allocate.
Thank you. Appreciate your information.
Thank you for not mentioning that, yes.
Let's start with. Mr. Buick, any questions or concerns?
No.
Okay. Now, once again, I think we need a motion, do we not? Thank you. Is there a motion for Proposed Resolution four twenty-nine?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you both. Final concerns? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call, please.
Commissioner Steelvogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Buick?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Please bear with me on these upcoming transfers, which there are quite a few. I know, you know, I'm talking to some other commissioners, in some counties, they just quickly act on them. I'm a little more, I guess, too detail oriented that I think it's appropriate we enter them into the record. And so I appreciate your patience. I'm going to walk us through these and let me ask, let me ask each of you. Well, the first few, we do have to assign numbers. And then further down, we have the group of transfers. But when I get to that point, if you're so willing, could we walk through them and then take one final vote at the end? Are you both okay with that?
Yeah.
Thank you. In the interest of time, so thank you. We'll begin with Proposed Resolution four thirty. And I should also note, it's that time of year, we're closing in on the end of the year. And as happens every year, the number of budget transfer requests that we get goes up. And so this is typical, that's nothing out of the ordinary. The first being Resolution four thirty. This is for three offices that need additional funds for postage. And again, when we put the budget together last year, postage was at a certain rate. We were not anticipating the postage increase that took place mid-year. And now we're having to scramble to catch up with it. So the total amount is forty-eight hundred dollars. All of it is coming from the commissioner's contingency. Twenty-five hundred is, twenty-five hundred dollars is going towards the courts, two thousand towards the platoon attorney and three hundred towards the public defender, all of which is for their postage line items. This is Proposed Resolution four thirty. May I have a motion?
Second.
Thank you both. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call, please.
Commissioner Steelvogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Buick?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Proposed Resolution four thirty-one. Coming from the commissioner's contingency, there are funds needed for the tax refund invoice. Pardon me, this is in the amount of one thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars. May I have a motion, please?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do either of you have any questions?
No.
No.
Thank you. Well, ask Vanessa to call the roll.
Commissioner Steelvogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Buick?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Resolution four thirty-two. This all applies to the voter's office. And if I am reading this correctly, the full amount of the transfer is forty-nine thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight dollars and nine cents. It is all coming from the solicitor contracted line item. And it's going to the voter's office, thirty-four thousand, thirty-three dollars and fifty-six cents towards salary of inside registrars, ten thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars and sixty-eight cents for salary of outside registrars, three thousand, nine hundred and eight dollars and eighty-seven cents for employee insurance and benefits, one thousand, fifty-two dollars and nine cents for FICA expense and seventy-eight dollars and eighty-nine cents towards unemployment insurance. This is Resolution four thirty-two. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Buick, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but you chair the election board. Any concerns? I realize this is to cover expenses for the additional staff that we have to bring in at election time, but anything else over and above that?
No, unfortunately, the budget that was adopted last year was cut in several line items. So this is just putting back what was needed to cover the staffing of elections.
Thank you. Commissioner Spillvogel, any concerns?
No.
Okay, thank you. I believe I did get a motion, a second, so we'll do a roll call, please.
Commissioner Steelvogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Buick?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Proposed Resolution four thirty-three. This involves the courts. They are asking for a fifteen thousand dollar transfer from a solicitor contracted services and applying that towards the court-appointed attorney's line item. Is there a motion for Resolution four thirty-three?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you both. Any concerns or questions?
No.
Hearing none, I'll ask for a roll call.
Commissioner Steelvogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Buick?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. These are the ones now that, to which we do not assign a number. I don't want to walk through them. At any point you have a question, just stop and we can address it. First, first is Domestic Relations. That's right.
Yeah, that's one of them.
Domestic Relations is asking for a six hundred and forty-five dollar transfer from their contingency into their hauling refuse line item. The courts are asking for a thirteen hundred dollar transfer into their maintenance and repairs. A thousand of that is coming from their contingency and three hundred dollars is coming from stenographer supplies. The jail is asking for a fifteen thousand, six hundred dollar in transfer. Sixteen hundred is coming from the arbitration line item. It's being put into the background drug test line item. And then from their contingency, fourteen thousand dollars into equipment lease and rental. The jail is also asking for a transfer of fifty thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Most of that is coming from arbitration, including a hundred and twenty-seven into vehicle expense, two thousand into their telephone line item, twelve hundred dollars into uniforms and twenty-five hundred dollars into salary. And then from the part-time guard line item, ten thousand dollars is being transferred in the maintenance repairs. Also from part-time guards, fifteen thousand into the equipment lease and rental. And then finally, twenty thousand from their contingency into contracted medical. Central court is asking for a two hundred and fifty dollar transfer from their telephone line item into materials and supplies. Central court is also asking for a five hundred dollar transfer from the court contingency into central court materials and supplies. Veterans is asking for a twenty-two hundred and thirty dollar transfer from their contingency into their office major line item. Adult probation is requesting a six hundred and forty-two dollar transfer from their contingency into hauling of refuse. Judge Amati's office is requesting a five hundred dollar transfer from their contingency into their staples line item. The tax claim office, here again, the whole issue of postage. They need to transfer two thousand dollars from contracted consultants into their postage line item. The district attorney's office is asking for a total of seven thousand, three hundred and six dollars and seventy-seven cents. The travel and training line item is where most of this is coming from. Thousand and six dollars and seventy cents into witness fees, eleven hundred and six dollars and twenty-one cents into staff overtime, four thousand dollars into materials and into materials and supplies, one thousand and four dollars and thirty-four cents into vehicle expense. From toxicology, sixty dollars and ninety-nine cents into staff overtime, as well as a hundred and twenty-eight dollars and fifty-three cents from vehicle expense also into staff overtime. Human Resources's office is requesting a seventy-five dollar transfer from their association dues line item into maintenance and repairs. Under liquid fuels, the total amount of the transfer request is sixty thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars and sixty-two cents. All of this is coming from liquid fuels contingency. Fifteen thousand is going towards county aid liquid fuels for the project in Union Township that is actually dates back to two thousand and nine. And then twenty-one thousand, six hundred and forty dollars and twenty-four cents goes towards county aid liquid fuels for the completion of a project in Pulaski Township. And then twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars and thirty-eight cents into county aid liquid fuels for a project completion in the borough of Waltham. The public defender is asking for a seventy-five dollar transfer to the contingency line item into attorney fees. The planning office is asking for a fifteen hundred dollar transfer from contingency into travel and training. The assessors office is asking for an. The assessor's office is asking for an eighty dollar transfer from their contingency into land and building rental for rental of access storage. The commissioners, the commissioner's office is requesting an eleven hundred dollar transfer from miscellaneous central services line item into land and building rental, again, for access storage. I'm assuming this is the mines?
Yes.
Thank you. Juvenile probation is asking for a one hundred dollar transfer from their contingency into office equipment, going back to liquid fuels. Under the bridge maintenance line item, we're taking eight thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars and sixty-eight cents and transferring that into the bridge inspection line item. The controller's office is asking for a four hundred and fifty dollar transfer from their contingency into land and building rental, which once again is documented, storage at the mine facility. The coroner's office is requesting a two hundred, two thousand dollar transfer from their Act one eighty-two contingency line item into Act one eighty-two vehicle expense. Recycling and solid waste is requesting a five hundred dollar transfer from their contingency into vehicle expenses. Catch my breath? Oh, we're going to repeat it. Do either of you have any questions on each proposed transfer? Mr. Buick, and I'm sure maybe you do.
I do. Do we know, did Waltham Underground increase their rates this year? Or simply that line item was simply not fully allocated? Because there were several for department.
We had, we had actually thought that we could do more action with getting the amount of stores that we have down there to get a lot of those removed. And so individual department line items were, were cut. And unfortunately, we didn't make as much progress as we were going to, so therefore we had to pay for them to continue to be there.
Well, typically, what was budgeted was the amount of the lease agreement for the documents to be sitting on the shelf.
Right.
Now, as we move, pick stuff out and move more to electronic versions when they treat.
Well, it's a material cost, it's really. I'm satisfied on that. The only other one I was surprised, salary at Wharton was in there for a request. Why, why was that not, that line item was not fully funded for the known salary after salary board last year? Or was there an adjustment mid-year?
I'm wondering if, when we had this.
I'm not real sure. That's the only one I was surprised. Normally, salary, you know, I can see wages or overtime.
Right.
Salaries are usually set.
They're not.
There was ever more, the budget reflects that in every one. But not, not a huge amount, but I was just curious.
I'm good, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Loretta, any other concerns on your part? Would one of you care to make a motion to accept all of these transfer requests?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you both. We'll do a roll call, please.
Commissioner Stilvogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Buick?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Vanessa. Dropping down to announcements. The Board of Commissioners will meet two weeks from today. Tuesday, November twenty-eighth at ten AM. It's a public meeting, and then it takes place in this room. We will not be meeting a week from today because we will be attending the county, the state County Commissioners Association Fall Conference in Dauphin County. Now, in about five or ten minutes after, as soon as we adjourn, we will convene the quarterly meeting of the Lawrence County Retirement Board, which will include three of us, the county comptroller and the county treasurer. That meeting is open to the public, and again, probably in about five or ten minutes, we'll start that meeting. And I'm looking at Loretta, to your knowledge, is the prison board planning to meet tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So at noon tomorrow, Commissioner Stilvogel chairs the prison board, and they do have a public meeting in this room.
Yes.
Let me see if there are public comments. Debbie, you, you make up the public today, so do you have any questions, Debbie?
I may not quite answer that, I don't have a response. But I can ask tomorrow.
Oh, okay, that's fine, and I have your packet for you. Thank you, Debbie. Closing comments from my fellow commissioners, Loretta.
None, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Buick?
Just one additional announcement. As Chair of the County Election Board, I will reconvene in recess, election board meeting, two weeks from today after the commissioners' meeting. That'll be on November twenty-eighth around eleven AM. I will reconvene the election board meeting just to wrap up the twenty twenty-three general election.
Thank you, sir. Joe or Vanessa, anything that you need to add? Well, we made it in under an hour. I'm pleasantly surprised.
That was a lot of work.
Thank you, Dan.
Oh, no, thanks to both of you as well. May I have an adjournment motion?
So moved.
Second.
Although, as they have adjourned, please say aye. Aye. Same sign, the motion carries, means adjourn. Thank you all. Eric's going to turn this off for a second. And then Eric, probably in about five minutes, we'll reassemble.
Real quick.
Retirement.